And attending our Board of Supervisor meeting. To begin with, we're going to have an opening prayer by Pastor Ron Gannett from the Community Church at Saddle Brook. We appreciate you being here. Following our prayer, if we could ask Supervisor Sertie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for those that wish to participate.
My Father, we just bow in your presence and we thank you for your wonderful grace. Lord, we thank you for the way you enrich our lives here in Pinal County. And Lord, we pray for the people of our district, that you might honor them and bless them today, and especially those who are serving us, and especially those in harm's way, that you would watch over and protect them and make us all a blessing to each other. We pray for this meeting. We thank you for this Board of Supervisors. We believe that they are appointed from heaven to serve us here, and I pray that you would grant them the wisdom and guidance that they need today. And Lord, I also pray, as we do your work together, help us to reflect the majesty, the dignity, and grace of who you are. Lord, we welcome your presence and thank you for this time together, in Christ's name. Amen.
We all join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Gannett and Supervisor Sertie. So with that, we'll begin our Board of Supervisor meeting dated March 6, 2024. And so the first item on our agenda is Call to the Public. And so just a quick note, kind of on my own, is that, you know, please be respectful when you come up and speak. Be respectful of each other. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to directing our staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for a further consideration and decision at a later date. So with that being said, I have, at this point, one card that was filled out. Robin Davis, if you'll come forward. And when anybody that comes up to speak, if you just tell us your name, your full name, and then kind of approximate where you live, and then you're allowed three minutes. Okay? So you're on.
It'll be short and sweet. Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisors. I come here today to thank you for the community cleanup days that you sponsor across the county. I live out in Hidden Valley, and I'd like to thank Supervisor Kavanaugh for continuing this. I don't know if you all hear it often enough, and how effective it is, and how much we appreciate it. We had ours at the beginning of February, and as soon as the flyer comes out, we post it across our community Facebook pages and get everybody going. And I don't know how many tons of trash you guys get from out there, but we post it. And this year, several of us volunteered to help neighbors who didn't have a pickup truck go out on roads that where there's illegal dumping and pick up all the trash that's out there. And it kind of continues throughout the year as we get our neighborhood cleaned up. So I wanted to thank you all for doing this and for helping us get rid of the trash in our neighborhood. Thunderbird Farms in Hidden Valley sure appreciates it. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Is there now, oh, it looks like we may have another card.
Nobody chose my card.
So why don't you go ahead and state your name?
My name's Arlen Trout. I've been here for a half a century. I live on King's Ranch Ridge. And back March of 2021, my family fell victim to these land developers. And they used strong-arm tactics, and we were forced to get protective orders, and then we were forced into Pinal County Superior Court. Well, that's been after $100,000 in three years. We're now at the punitive stages of this, and my family and I, we're getting put under a lot of pressure. I have to testify on the 29th of March. And right now, we're being threatened. And I've tried to put the complaint to the police, but they say that they won't talk to me about it because it's a civil investigation. And I'm trying to explain that all the civil investigation is over, and we're talking about punitive damages, and my family's being threatened. So I would ask you to, I believe Mr. Sertie and Mr. Lou, Mr. Faulkner, is aware of what's going on. I need to be able to have a conversation with the Pinal County Sheriff's Department and get them up to date on what's happening right now to my family. And I was hoping that you could help me with this. So that's pretty much what I have to say. My neighbor was hit with a hammer. I was sent to the hospital. My kids are terrified, and my wife, these people have gone after my wife. So I would appreciate your help. And I believe that I have, I'm not a party to any lawsuits. I have not made any claims, but I believe the county has hired attorneys, so I can't get them to deal with me and this either. And the Maricopa County attorneys say they can't help me because Pinal County won't submit any documentation or any of the complaints that we'd filed criminally. So I appreciate your help. Thank you. Arlen Trout.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trout. Are there any others that would like to address? Mr. Oh, shoot.
That's all right.
I just turned 65, so I apologize.
No problem.
All right, Noel.
Okay, I'm Noel Rec from Eloy. I want to start and end with positives. It's good to see items on the agenda dealing with workforce development, reentry work programs, and community development. That's great county governance. Many of these positive programs appear to come out of the offices of County Attorney Volkmer. He and his office are to be commended for their efforts. You know, the average citizen doesn't have a lot of platforms in which to voice his or her opinion. Letters to the editor, requests to speak, and the various calls to the public are about it. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I wish to utilize this platform to, again, alert the citizens here today, video viewers at home, the board, and the staff as to the problems and dangers the Republican Party continues to perpetuate on the public in general, the shortlist of what they've been up to lately. They kicked the can down the road again with another continuing resolution. Making matters worse, the Arizona contingent again voted against that. Do they really want to shut down, or are they just getting better at counting the votes and appeasing their base? Weisselberg found guilty of perjury in the Trump civil fraud trial. Trump again selling out NATO. The Hunter Biden hearing fiasco, their star witness, a Russian asset, and arrested for lying to the FBI. Trump's edict to turn thumbs down on the bipartisan border agreement despite being endorsed by the Border Patrol and seen by moderate Republicans is the best deal that they could possibly get. Oklahoma Senator Langford was censured by his own state party for having the nerve to work across the aisle. Meanwhile, aid for Ukraine, Israel, Gaza, and Taiwan languishes in their inaction. The Supreme Court takes the case of presidential immunity, handing Trump another delay that he so loves. Which brings me to a question for Attorney Volkmer and Dor Keller. Have there been rulings that guarantee the right of a speedy trial to the prosecution in light of a defendant's misuse of the system through frivolous delays? Just curious. Here in Arizona, it's been business as usual with 70-plus legislative referendums aimed at getting around the vetoes of Governor Hobbs, targeting issues such as ranked choice voting, citizens' initiatives, common sense gun-related regulations, local elections and voting locations, the homeless as a public nuisance, and climate change. Other legislative actions awaiting her veto are hobbling the Arizona National Guard, limiting free speech through selective funding of college clubs, allowing the murder of migrant trespassers, and more on transgender students and their teachers. Public school teachers facing felony charges for inappropriate materials, but not teachers in private schools. More on election integrity, including discontinuing early and mail voting. And two miscellaneous headshakers, a monument to Sandra Day O'Connor and her legacy is being demeaned, and the voucher scam reared its ugly head with an indictment for $600,000 in fraud carried out under a poorly crafted and police program the voters never wanted in the first place. Again, I urge all Arizonans to contact these elected officials to let them know their actions are unacceptable. It's a personal decision, yet considering where we are, silences complicity. To end, I'd like to congratulate Roberto Ravelas on his official announcement to run for state senate in LD7. A finer, more qualified, and more dedicated senator could not be found. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rec. Is there any others that would like to address the board? Okay. I just, real quick comment, just because I said I'm 65 doesn't, I don't know of anybody that's brighter than Mr. Ravelas, to be honest with you, and on top of things. And so I don't mean to demean anybody that's beyond 65. I'm just, it's me, okay? Yeah, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, I had a request to me.
Yes, because there was two of you that were named in specific.
Yeah. I don't believe Attorney Volkmer can respond right now, but could you contact Mr. Trout and let him know what we can and cannot do, and what the status is of the pending, because I, okay? You heard the, okay? All right, thank you.
And Mr. Kavanaugh, did you have any response that you wanted to say?
Well, I would like a briefing on Mr. Trout's issue. I don't know if that'd be appropriate in an exec session from the county attorney's office or what, so. Will?
Yeah. Thumbs up. You got it. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Our next item is community, our county manager's report.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to first mention that the weather's nice, and there's a lot to do throughout the county. Our website, explore.pinal.gov, has a calendar of events that can be attended. There's music, entertainment, food, hot air balloons, copper education and fund, those kind of things going on all throughout the county. So anyone interested, please look at that. And then I wanted to give an update on something that the Maricopa Associations of Governments, MAG, is going to take the lead on for us. It's something that you have been working on even before you were here in office and as you've been in office this whole time. If the clerk could show just a graphic of the area that we're talking about, I think we just snapped this from Google just so that people would understand the area here. So that's, the red line is approximately where Meridian Road is. And so MAG is going to initiate a study, design concept review to get us to about 15% on the alignment. There are multiple jurisdictions that are involved in this. City of Mesa, Apache Junction, Queen Creek, Pinal County, Maricopa County, as that's one of our borders. And we're going to look at Broadway on the north side, all the way down to the 24. And I know, obviously, the county, and you've been involved in a lot of work south of the 24 as well. And so that's a, it's a big step in the right direction for all of us to coordinate on how the road's going to go and what the standard of that road is going to be as development is coming in and parts of that road are being constructed. And then next, wanted to just make the announcement, it's going to be in our broadcast as well. But again, thank Denise. I know we've celebrated her. She worked as a Juvenile Court Services Director. She retired recently. And she had worked with the county for 37 years and has done a lot of great things here. So I want to thank her again. And then announce that the newly appointed Juvenile Court Services Director is Jeanne Bradner. She has long years of experience in management innovation at both the Nebraska and Arizona Supreme Courts in juvenile court services. So thank you, Denise, and congratulations to Jeanne. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
A request for the county manager, perhaps for the next meeting. I'd like to see a report to the board on employee turnover. I met a manager who, after 19 years, was stepping out. And so I'd like to see a report on employee turnover presented to the board as soon as possible to identify weaknesses or strengths and problems where we might have employee turnover issues.
But I know that we get a prize to a lot of those things currently, and we've been looked at some of, a lot of those issues and things. And I know we've been trying to, along with that, any kind of exit interviews would be good to include in that, and what some of their feedback is about working here, so.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. During the budget process, and we talk about compensation, total compensation and benefits, this can be a part of that discussion.
Okay.
Include that.
Yeah, and I think I got the impression from Supervisor Kavanaugh, a little bit, if you can put something together, maybe let all five of us know what the status is. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Now, item number three, the supervisor district updates. Supervisor Kavanaugh, we'll start with you, and then Supervisor McClure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the Maricopa Lake Video Park grand opening, excuse me, Maricopa Lake View Park grand opening Saturday, March 16, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. We are still looking for someone to serve on the Merit System Commission. It has, it cannot be a Republican, so the Republican slots have been filled. So if you know someone who is not a Republican, who would be a good person to serve on the Merit Commission, please contact our office. And then we have, I think we have a video of the dedication of our building to the Korean War. Is that, is that accurate? Okay, we have that video today, so we'll show that real quick. When I became supervisor, I was elected in 2020, and in 2021, I realized we just have an office, one single room inside the elections building. So we were going to rent space in the Safeway Plaza, and between deposit, remodeling the space, and rent, I said, for that amount of money, we should be able to buy a building in Coolidge. Well, this one was available. It was a good deal. We bought it. It was remodeled, and we preserved a bit of history in Coolidge and Pinal County.
Well, I've been in Coolidge. We arrived here in, somewhere in December of 1929. I've been here 94 years.
The Hayduk Building has been a lot of things. It's been a hardware store, and then we had a restaurant that served hamburgers and coffee.
George and Ellen, they did most of the coffee.
Oh, he made the best hamburgers. Dad would give us enough money to get a hamburger and a malt, you know? And we'd do that, and, oh, it just like you went to heaven, you know? It was a great day when you were able to do that.
That's where all the farmers came, and every day, Mr. Hayduk would post the water levels in the dam. That way, the farmers knew how much water they could put on their crops that day.
There was another outfit moved in here, and this whole honey.
Dolly Parton and Loretta Lynn and others have their own stores out in the southeast, and this gentleman flavored special honeys for those stores.
That section over there was kind of a hardware, bicycles, and stuff like that.
I've got such fond memories of everything here.
It's been an accounting office. In fact, I have an accounting degree. The guy who sat in that very same spot was an accountant, and it's like two accounting firms sat in that very same spot where I'm sitting right now.
When I went in high school in '44, they drafted me into service.
The Hayduk Building is where many veterans left during the Korean War and the latter parts of World War II.
Me and a buddy of mine, Kenneth Fraser, joined on the buddy plan. Well, we left from here on the Continental Trailways bus.
And then this back door was where the bus stopped.
And the bus picked them up on the side of the building here, right outside these windows, and they left, and their families kissed them goodbye on the sidewalk. Some came home, some didn't. When veterans drive by this building, even before we bought it, they remember that was the place that my brother, my dad, my cousin, my uncle left and went to war. So we had a brass plaque made for the front of the building, and it talks about this being the last place that people saw before they went to war. And on that is pictured, I believe it's a GMC 4103 bus. And the plaque reminds people the importance of this building. It's not just some place with brick and mortar. It's a place of history.
When they first started doing construction here, I thought, oh, no. There goes Hayduk showing it's going away. And the more I looked at it, and the more it stayed the same and looked better, I thought, wow, this is fantastic, you know? And then, when they put up the plaque to recognize it, and the military that have been through this building, and the kids that played in this building, and ate, and had a good time, it definitely was some good times in Coolidge, Arizona.
So not only has the Hayduk Building been a part of history, it's going to be a part of history moving forward. It will always be a place of importance to Pinal County and to Coolidge.
Supervisor McClure.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Let's see, this last week, we had a State of the County meeting at Anthem. That went very well. And we don't have a video of that. We do have a video. Throw the video up.
We're here at Anthem Parkside Community Center because this is a place we could meet to bring people together to hear about what the county does.
Let's start the party.
We put on a coordinated effort to bring different departments in. Then we started with economic development, and we moved into public works, and we moved into planning and development. So that people see that it's a coordinated effort across the county. It's not just this department operates independently from this department. It's not a bunch of little silos shooting off missiles. It is a coordinated effort to bring everybody together to talk about the issues in the county and to understand the needs of the county. That's how we find out from these folks what their needs are, but then how we're going about solving those needs.
We came just because we wanted to find out about what was continuing to go on in the area. We've been down here since 2008. We have a home in Santan Valley.
Being able to present ourselves in front of the community is a great opportunity. You know, people call my office because they don't know where to go in the county, who to talk to. And so we help develop that communication path. I think this way, when the public sees these different entities from the county, the different departments come out, they get a feeling that, oh, my gosh, that's somebody I can talk to, and, oh, that's who I need to be talking to. There they are, right there. They can ask questions, they can get more information. That's what we're trying to do, is provide information.
Like everywhere else, everything comes down to the buck, you know? And that's why things happen, and why things don't happen, and why things sometimes take as long as they do to get better.
Hot topic. It depends on the area of the county we're in, but specifically up here, it's transportation.
We're sort of concerned about Hunt Highway because it's a busy road that runs through the area that we're in.
It's Hunt Highway. It's Arizona Farms. It's 79. It's, oh, how do we get around? How do we do that? How do we bring businesses in? What are you going to do with all the homes? How are we going to handle the water? That's our topics, is to let them, explain to them what we're doing in the background because they don't see that. You won't read that in the newspaper. You won't see it on the news because we don't have a news station. And how else are you going to find out about it? We're bringing that information to you.
Absolutely. I thought it was very well done.
The public gets to ask questions for a specific need, and that's great because we're talking in generalities when we come out and do a presentation. They ask a specific need, and we're able to respond to that specific question, very targeted answer.
Thank you. Let's see. Besides that, we've got a, let's see, we have a trash pickup next week in the Tri-Community Area, Oracle, Salmon Well, Mammoth. There'll be, as Ms. Davis was talking about, we have a pickup in Salmon Well for those three communities. And that's pretty much all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sertie.
So like Mr. McClure, we're having the State of the County tomorrow night at 5:30 at the Apache Junction Multi-Gym Center. We'll have most department heads there to answer questions and give reports. I'll give, like, a year-end review, and also take your questions and comments if anybody wants to, wants, has any. Had a meeting yesterday with ADOT, which was very productive and informative. The main one that this group has been working on was the attempt to get Highway 88 open. It is still happening. It's going to happen a little bit slower than we'd hoped. We'd hoped they'd already be working on it, but as of right now, the scope of work is going out to bid in May. They will hopefully start in June, and then Highway 88, Fish Creek Hill, will be open in the fall. You'll be able to drive the whole loop. It affects three counties, a lot of tourism, a lot of fishing game, and safety, et cetera. So it's very important to have that open. While we had ADOT in the room, we also got an update on their trash pickup that they do along the state highways. A lot of people think it's the county's responsibility. It's not, and they had lost their vendor for a while, but they are up and operating. If something gets dumped on a Sunday night, it may not get picked up till the following week. I mean, you got to give them like a week to do their circuit. Another request from the Gold Canyon area, because Gold Canyon's main street is a state highway, is the use of jack brakes or downshifting with the 18-wheelers as they come through town and hit the red lights. And we started a formal request to get signage up to not downshift to break for those lights out there. So very productive, and that's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller.
Well, we haven't had our State of the District Three meeting yet. Anyways, we're going to be at the end of this month, and now it's being pushed to April, but it's coming. And so we will have, we will have an opportunity for the constituents of my district to meet with staff and myself in the future. I think it'll be in April, though we're working on that date right now. Outside of that, I've spent most of my time at the legislature for the last week or so, and I'll hit that when I get to that portion of the agenda. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. You know, Supervisor Miller is also the president of our CSA organization, which takes a lot of time and effort that he has willingly put forth. And so basically, he's the head of all 15 counties. CSA is the County Supervisors Association, so it's all 15 counties that CSA represents. And Supervisor Miller was voted in as the president here last year.
So he's like the governor.
He's, he's. So is that an announcement or what? So with my district, District Two, I'm in the same. I think every week, we've been holding meetings at various communities. Last night, we held a meeting, and we had a lot of our staff present along the same lines that Supervisor Sertie and Supervisor McClure is showing. Our staff was there. We answered a lot of the questions and things of that nature. One of the biggest things that we have in our rural areas is a lot of code enforcement issues. And with us going through our codes right now and our ordinances, there's a lot of things that we need to make some tweaks and adjustments to. And thank goodness for our county community service department and our code compliance. We met with many of the citizens last night there in one of the mini-farms, and it was a pretty good turnout. And we had a lot of questions that were asked as we go forward in revamping our codes and our ordinances. So those are some things that we're being, we're doing right now. It was great to hear that from the city manager in regards to the extension from the 24 Meridian Road all the way to Broadway. That was something right from the very beginning when I came on board that I wanted to see happen. We didn't realize that the 24 was going to come so early. The only connection we could see was another road all the way to the 60. But because of our efforts that we did, along with the town of Queen Creek, getting it to where the alignment of the 24, that escalated the 24 to where it was opened in 2022 as opposed to 2026, made a big difference for everybody in this region, on the north region. And now that's a great announcement of the extension of that Meridian Road all the way to Broadway. That's going to help tremendously with a lot of the new development that's taking place in Apache Junction. So there's a lot, as you can see, as you've heard from all five of us, there's a lot of things that are transpiring and taking place in our county. And so we appreciate our staff and all the work and effort that they're doing. So, all right. Item number four. Oh, there is, I have a vacant seat on open space and trails. So if you're into biking, or hiking, or anything else of that nature, from my district, I would ask that you would come forward. I've had two or three people, but because of their time constraints, they couldn't do it, but there's an open space on the open space and trails. So I invite anybody to come forward and volunteer for that. Item number Item number four is announcement, again, on open space and trails. We have, this is for information only, Supervisor McClure and Kavanaugh, if you wish to. Proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bowman, are you here today? I don't see you. Well, anyway, we're reappointing Mr. Bowman to the Open Space and Trails Commission. So if he was here, we'd get a picture, but since he's not...
Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Robin Davis here, who spoke at Call to the Public, and she'll be serving on open space and trails. And what's cool about Robin Davis is she was kind of the adversary, or excuse me, the emissary, not adversary, for open spaces and, and clean, clean areas, and, and really helped me out when I first switched districts. And so it's a natural fit that we would, we would place Robin Davis in the position on the Advisory Commission to, to open space and trail. So thank you, Robin. Does Robin get a picture with the entire board, then? Is that what you said, Mr. Chairman? You said pictures, or?
I said...
Oh, you said pictures.
Oh, he said pictures, but I, I think it's just the supervisor and...
Okay.
So you and Ms. Davis, if you would come forward.
All right.
We'll photobomb the background, though. Okay. Item number five. This is a discussion approval, disapproval of a proclamation identifying April as the Fair Housing Month to be read into the record by Marshall Williams. So is Mr. Williams here? Mrs. Williams, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That is quite all right. Good morning.
Is it Marcelle?
It's Marcelle Williams.
Okay.
Yes, sir. But good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chairman Mr. Goodman, and other members of the board. My name is Marcelle Williams. I stand before you today, as so many times before, for the approval to declare April as Fair Housing Month. I'm not sure if you're familiar with or have seen the movie The Burial, which is played by Gary, Willie Gary, played by Jamie Foxx, and Joseph O'Keefe, played by Tommy Lee Jones. There is one scene in that movie that stuck out, stuck out to me as I stand here today. In the movie, Mr. O'Keefe is suing a very reputable company who never followed through on a contract agreement. Willie Gary is the lawyer representing Joseph O'Keefe. They take a trip to Miami to meet with the CEO of the business. And while on the plane, they begin having casual conversation. Joseph asks Willie, what made you want to become a lawyer? And he said, I applied for a rental property. I was approved, packed up my family, and we were on our way to our new home. When we arrived at the property, it was no longer available for rent. You could see the hurt on his face, but he continued to smile on the outside, looking at his family, giving them reassurance that everything was going to be okay. Therefore, he made a change to make a change by becoming a lawyer, to help others. Just imagine how many times and how many families that has happened to before, being turned away with no place to go. That is why the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, familial status, and disability to anyone renting or buying a home, seeking housing assistance, or engaging in other housing-related activities. This is one of the many reasons why we, as a community, must make it possible for no one to ever go through any situation of not having a place to feel comfortable, safe, secure, or protected. This is why I stand before you today, asking for the approval that the month of April to be declared as Fair Housing Month. Thank you for your time.
Is there any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve April as the Fair Housing Month.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You bet.
So I have a comment with respect to Marcelle. I've heard things about you.
Thank you.
And the things I've heard are that you have extraordinary integrity, remarkable character, extraordinary faith, a good attitude, and you make a very positive impact in the place you work. And that comes directly from your coworkers, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, would you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm by the Pinnell County Board of Supervisors proclamation, Fair Housing Month, April 2024. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments of Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in the provisions of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Act declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas the month of April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States. Now, therefore, we, the Pinnell County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Fair Housing Month, and urge all citizens of the county to comply with and show their support for the letter and the spirit of the Fair Housing Act proclaim this sixth day of March 2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, that is a photo, isn't it?
Oh. Can we get a picture? Marcelle, are you okay with that? Thank you.
I'm coming. Okay. And, three jump, scooch up just a little bit, just closer to the... Just a little bit. There you go. There we go. Sertie, tighten up just a tad. There we go. There we go. And three, two. Nice smile. Here we go. This is the good one right here. Three, two, one. Nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sertie.
Okay. Item number six. Discussion and update regarding the 2024 state and federal legislation sessions, including any bills, budget proposals, and so on and so forth. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just noticed that federal. I don't have any federal stuff. I don't know if we should put that, take that off, because I, I really haven't had an opportunity to speak with Steve Block in a long time. So, let me get my cheat sheet here. So, because I sit as the president of the CSA, I oversee the legislative policy meetings on Fridays. So this is information from Friday's meeting that I'm providing. Things are always happening. I was there yesterday in discussion with legislators on some certain, some bills, and making sure they understand the, the importance to the legislation and how it affects counties. So you have to keep that in the context that, in this role that I play as the, the president of CSA, we focus mainly on the county scenarios. So I'll just quickly go through a couple that are out there that we're monitoring and that may have be concern to everybody. There's a Senate Bill 1278 and a House Bill 2703, which has to do with how long the county supervisors have to fill a vacancy at the state legislature. And they were really crunching the time on that. So I think the, as far as the counties are concerned, we'd like to see something longer, like around 14 days. But we've seen some legislation out there with only seven days that we would have. So there's some, those two bills are competing, and we'll have to see what lands on there. Cottage home construction, I don't think that that's going anywhere. That's 2096. There seemed to be a desire for no regulations on that, and I don't see that happening. There's a, there's a bill out there, 2097, that has to do with gray water. Again, I doubt that that will go anywhere. The public health departments are like, we can't be just having gray water everywhere, because they've got, they keep, they keep amending it and making it less, less sanitary, for lack of a better word. But we're monitoring it, because you just really never know where it's going to go. There is another one that's out there that has to do with churches can take a portion of their land and, and turn it into a subdivision and sell it in, in a profit-type way. But they're putting a lot of restrictions on it. It's hard to say where that's going to go and really what the purpose of it was. But, because I thought maybe that somebody would just buy, sell it from the church. They will lose their tax exempt on the portion that's, that's developed into housing. It's kind of interesting that there's a desire to even increase densities in some places with, with church parking lots. So that's one we're keeping an eye on. I think for the most part, that's, that's the, that's the highlight ones that's out there. There's one out there for, there's another one that I should bring up, that has to do with PTSD for the, for firemen and police officers and stuff. And the desire to use mushrooms or alleged, uh, hallucinogen type drug to treat that. But what, so on examination of that, though, doesn't appear that our insurance would pay for that type of treatment. So it's kind of interesting to see where that's going to go. But that's, that's out there and has created some, some discussion, and we'll keep an eye on that. On a personal note, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I did, I requested a, a floor amendment on House Bill 2647, which had to do with certificates of assured water. And I requested that there be a replenishment component in there. I was successful in getting a floor amendment on that this week. Now it still has to go back to the, the Senate and what have you. It's not a done deal. But we're working on trying to tighten that bill up and make it more conducive to our situation here in Pinnell County. Unless you have any questions on specific bills, that's my report at this point in time.
Yeah, thank you. I know that, I was at a meeting not too long ago where, you know, water has been, has seemed to be a big factor for a lot of the businesses to locate here in the valley, within the Phoenix metropolitan area. And, but the thing that was interesting that is even more now is our capacity to be able to generate power. And so those are some things that a lot of these larger companies are looking into to make sure, because of the power, power outages that they've had in Texas and other communities, and with these high-tech industries coming into the area, they want to make sure that they're going to have plenty of power. Well, I'm happy to say that when you look at a lot of the things that SRP and, and APS has done in our regions, they are really ramping up to make sure that, to make sure that we don't have power outages. And I've said it before, and I, I'll say it again, I think nuclear power is one that we ought to be putting at the table and having some serious conversations about. We're looking at third-world countries that are doing things, and so I think those are some things that need to be considered and looked at. Okay. If there's no other, let's go on to Purchasing Division Report. Item number seven. Ms. Woods.
Good, good morning, Chairman Goodman, members of the board. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and I have today's Purchasing Division Report for March 6, 2024. And again, the report is quite lengthy, so please bear with me. The board has requested to approve the following contract awards. RFP 242729 for landscaping services. It's recommended Epiphany Landscaping Incorporated be, to be awarded a contract beginning today, March 6, 2024, through March 5, 2025, with four optional one-year extensions. Contract is used countywide. RFP 243628 for courier services. It's recommended to approve Mercury Delivery Services to be awarded a contract beginning today, March 6, 2024, through March 5, 2025, with four optional one-year extensions. This contract is also used countywide. The board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. For RFP 204126 for towing services for PCSO, it's recommended approval of Amendment Number Five to exercise an optional extension period from March 15 of 2024 through March 14 of 2025 with the following suppliers. Asecure Towing LLC, Absolute Towing and Recovery, Apache Sands, Axel Towing and Pound LLC, Catalina Towing and Recovery, CL King Towing, DNS Towing, Eddie's Towing Incorporated, Elite Towing LLC, Hughes Towing, K&amp;R Towing and Management, Knight Towing LLC, Mammoth Towing and Service, Phoenix Metro Towing, Santan Valley Towing, Secured Right Towing, Southwest 24-Hour Towing, Star Towing, and Stay Up Towing LLC. There is one optional extension period remaining, and again, this is used by our Sheriff's Office. ROQ 205126 for on-call land use permits, planning services, excuse me. It's recommend approval of Amendment Number Three to exercise optional extension period from March 28 of 2024 through March 27 of 2025 with Michael Baker International Incorporated, Norris Design, and Planet Communities. There is one optional extension period remaining on this contract, and it is used by the Community Development Division of Development Services. ROQ 205226 for on-call regional park, trail, and open space planning. It's recommended approval of Amendment Number Three to exercise the optional extension period from March 28 of 2024 through March 27 of 2025 with Environmental Planning Group LLC, McGann and Associates Incorporated. There are, there is one optional extension period remaining on this contract, and it's used by our Parks and Trails Division of Development Services. ROQ 205326 for on-call traffic engineering services. It's recommended approval of Amendment Number Three to extend, exercise the extension period from March 28 of 2024 through March 27 of 2025 with CivTech Incorporated, Green Light Traffic Engineering LLC, Lee Engineering LLC, Y2K Engineering LLC. There are, there is one optional extension period remaining on this contract, and it's used by Development Services Division of, it's just by Development Services, excuse, excuse me. ROQ 205426 for on-call trail planning and design services. Recommended approval of Amendment Number Three to exercise the optional extension period from March 28, 2024, through March 27 of 2025 with American Conservation Experience and McGann Associates Incorporated. There's one... There's one optional extension period remaining, and the contract is used by the Parks and Trails Division of Development Services. ROQ 205626 for on-call zoning and subdivision regulation services. It's recommended approval Number Three to exercise the optional extension period from March 28 of 2024 through March 27 of 2025 with Matrix Design Group and Michael Baker International Incorporated. There's one optional extension period remaining, and the contract is used by the Community Development Division of Development Services. ROQ 205826 for on-call archaeological and environmental services. It's recommended approval of Amendment Number Three to exercise the optional extension period from March 28 of 2024 through March 27 of 2025 with Commonwealth Heritage Group Incorporated, Desert Archaeology, Higglewar, Higglewar Wilson LLC, excuse me, SWCA Environmental Consultants. There's one optional extension period remaining on this contract, and it's used by the Public Works Division of Development Services. Lastly, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative extent, cooperative purchases made, excuse me, PO Number 251318, with the supplier of net transcripts. The amount of purchase is $130,000 for legal transcription services used by our Public Defense Services Department. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Supervisors? Seeing that there's none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Purchasing Division Report as presented.
Do we have a motion second?
Second.
You have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Thank you.
Good. Hey, thank you. Okay, item number eight, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of a consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So, so far I have item number E, Brian Sapala. Supervisor Miller has asked that item H be pulled. Is a member of our staff here to address item number I. Okay, so our staff has asked that item number, look like Joel, and so Joe Workman. And then Supervisor Kavanaugh has asked for item number N. Our city manager, is there anything you want to pull? Anybody from the public? Okay. Do we have a motion moving forward?
Chair, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent items A through, I believe it's R, A through R minus E, H, I, and N.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. So let's start off with Brian Sapala.
I'm sorry. All right, good morning, Chairman and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few moments on item E, which is, you know, discussion approval for the Pinal County to become a party to the Good Neighbor Agreement between the Town of Superior and Resolution Copper. I am representing Resolution Copper today as well as the Community Working Group as a member of that group. This group was formed about 10 years ago to support the project and the community with the sole purpose of allowing stakeholders to be involved in helping to shape the project from every, from every facet. So the, the Community Working Group has really been involved in helping the project identify key components of the project, like where tailings will go, what mitigations the project will commit to for the life of the project, what investments the project will make in the community, and so many more things. In 2021, the, the Town of Superior and Resolution Copper identified an opportunity to start developing what is considered a Good Neighbor Agreement, in which outlines the way that the communities in Pinal County, as well as the company, will work together for the life of the mine to ensure that everybody has a seat at the table. So really, this request today is for Supervisor Jeff Sertie as District Five Supervisor to have a seat on the Community Working Group and be a member of that group, as well as Pinal County to sign on to the Good Neighbor Agreement and be a collaborator for the life of the project. So that's the, the project in a nutshell. I don't know if Supervisor has any additional comments on that, but.
Supervisor Sertie?
No, I was going to pull this item also, just so that you could explain what, what it does mean for that whole region out there, and while Brian is here. Brian, you also just received some very positive news this week. Hopefully that helps this even work better. Explain that good news that just happened.
Well, there was a, a decision from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals to, um, see, to help support it, to see if the project will continue to move forward, and it did fall into the favor of the US Forest Service, so now we just continue to wait for what the next step will be in that. So there'll be some additional work with that, but it's important to note that this Community Working Group and the Good Neighbor Agreement, it's the first of its kind in Arizona. I think there's one other one in the US at the Stillwater Mine in Montana, which is kind of what we modeled ours after. And what it really does is it allows, if there's any challenges or, you know, opportunities for feedback within all of our partners, communities, municipalities, nonprofits, if they have a seat at the table, they're going to help shape what the future is.
So I thought it important to bring that up because Resolution is, is doing all this, and they're not even a working mine yet. So they're doing this all without even being open, so just imagine, once they do get open, how much they will mean for District Five and the whole county and the whole state. So we're looking forward to that.
Happy to answer any questions you might have pertaining to the item on the agenda.
Okay, any, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item E and give Supervisor Sertie something else to do.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Supervisor Miller, item number H.
Yes, item number H, and, and it's just more out of curiosity. I, I always like seeing these types of programs because I believe it's for recidivism or to decrease that number. But we had a program through the courts, and I'm just wondering, is this in conjunction with the Superior Court, or is it, if you won't mind, Joel, if you want to come up and address it, or is it a completely separate program that, because it indicates only 50 adults that it would serve? And I, I'm just curious, because we have a program, or we had at least a facility in Casa Grande at one time that was doing this, which I think is really, really good. But how does this one work with that one, or does it even work with it at all?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Joel Millman, Pinal County Economic Workforce Development Department and Director for Arizona Work, Pinal County. This program will be working in conjunction with all efforts we have going on in the county to work with the adult probationers. It's kind of working as a pilot to get some of our resources in sync with that population, so we'll be reaching out to the courts to address any of the needs of the participants in this program.
Okay, well, that's good, and I, because I really think that that's where we need to go. I know in a previous program, they actually would start visiting with these potential probationary individuals while they were still incarcerated, but to prepare them and what to do as soon as they got out. But again, let's see if we can't help these folks change the directions of their lives.
This is definitely a popul, I'm sorry. No, this is definitely a population we need to beef up our, our effort, and so this is a, a good first step, given the source of the funding we have an opportunity to initiate.
Absolutely. Well, that's all I, that's the reason I wanted to bring it out, so.
And Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Sertie.
The other Jeff, I know who you mean.
Well, I was sneezing, so I had to get the S out.
Mr. Millman, this, this is working in conjunction with the reentry program that we have going. Is that correct?
Well, we're going to reach out to all resources that the county currently has in place and to better sync our, our service delivery system with the population.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on, on item number H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item H as presented.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Joel, I'm going to invite you back up for item number I.
Did I reintroduce myself? Oh, okay.
Who are you?
Still Joel Millman. Last I checked, I'm still with the Pinal County Economic Workforce Development Department, and I believe at the moment I'm still the Director for Arizona Work, Pinal County. The Pinal County Workforce, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The Pinal County Workforce Development Board is a 23-member board, which is by federal statute comprised of a majority of business representatives in a community and various other resources that oversee our Arizona Work, Pinal County system. We, the members of that board are charged with overseeing the vision and implementation of services delivered by various partners that make up Arizona Work, Pinal County. The Pinal County Workforce Development Board makes recommendations for its membership, but it is the, one of the major roles of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors to make the official appointment of its members. We were afforded the opportunity, we have a vacancy on our board, and so we reached out to the community. Our vacancy was in the business sector, and work we are pleased to recommend, in recognition of his acceptance of this nomination, Mike Cruz of Lucid Motors, and that is the motion that is included in the consent agenda here, is to request appointment of Mike Cruz to the Pinal County Workforce Development Board. Be remiss to say, our board is chaired by Harold Christ of the Windmill Winery, and Mike Cruz is here in the audience as well. If you have any questions or would like to hear some comments from him, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is there a vetting process to be on this board? If he wants to say anything, he certainly can, but you selected somebody pretty, that'll, that'll be beneficial to the board for sure.
I was going to ask the same process for Supervisor District Three. Chairman Goodman, members of the board, it's an honor to be here. Mike Cruz, representing Lucid Motors. It's great to be home. First and foremost, before we begin, and just share a little bit about what this means for Lucid Motors and for the Pinal County at Work Force Development Board. I want to say thank you to the Supervisors and Pinal County staff that came out to our recent ribbon-cutting ceremony, celebrating the expansion of our Phase Two facility, which is 2.8 million of additional operational space for our operations down in Casa Grande. We are the largest employer in Pinal County, and your support and commitment to our mission and vision and our employees is essential, and we appreciate it and thank you. It means, it means a lot to our community in this county and the work we're doing to really innovate and create new opportunities, jobs, and to move the, move the needle forward with the idea of e-mobility. In terms of this particular board, I want to take a moment really to commend Mr. Millman and the entire At Work Force, Pinal County Development Board, and all of the group that works at Pinal County at Work. I, I sit on the board for the Arizona Manufacturing Council here in Arizona, also an appointed commissioner from Superintendent Tom Horn at the Arizona Education Economic Commission, and our focus has been workforce development. And all the, all the feedback and interactions I have with a lot of people and professionals in this industry have commended Pinal County and Pinal, and all the work that Mr. Millman and his team is doing. They see it as a benchmark for what it looks like to have good workforce development and what it takes to bring teams together to do what's right, to create policies and opportunities to ensure that every resident in this county has an opportunity to better themselves and to find quality employment. So thank you. On behalf of the Lucid Motors family, we thank you for this opportunity. We look forward to working as the largest employer in the county. We want to be able to represent our voice, share our voice, give some insight, and help mold good policy that creates good opportunities for workers in this great county. So with that, we thank you, and we appreciate the work you're doing to continue our support and our efforts here. I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions.
I, I just have one comment and a, and a favor to ask. I spoke at the Central Arizona College Board of, of their school board the other day, and it happened to be out in, in our, in our neck of the woods there at the Santa Valley Campus. And I speak for, I, I hope I speak for Supervisor McClure and Supervisor Kavanaugh. Between the three of us, we represent six high schools in that Santa Valley region, There's a tremendous opportunity for us to help educate and mold, especially in specific areas with these stackable certificates in that region right there. And so I would ask that our at-work help focus on, let's do something to encourage the students over in that area to be a part of our at-work force program. So that's, that's what I'm requesting.
And we need to stall for about a minute while we get a chance to sign your certificate.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Bat Supervisor Miller.
I think, I, what I'd really like to point out here, now, this is a true public-private kind of operation, because we have the private sector working with a government agency to, to really meet the needs of the, the workforce of the future. And so I, I really like the way that we've structured this. I, you've given us some pretty high accolades. I, I did not realize that we stand out amongst other organizations in the state. I kind of like to be that way. I like to be stealth. I like to just do it, and we don't need a lot of hoopla about it, just get it done. And you guys have done a great job with that. Welcome aboard, Mike.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller. Good work speaks for itself, and to your point, Chairman Goodman, you know, as a school board member in my community, I value education. I'll work with Mr. Millman and the, the rest of the board to bring that. And just so you know, behind the scenes, maybe we could connect, working with Superintendent Horn and the work we're doing on the Arizona Economic Education Commission. That's really our focus right now, is getting into CTE programming across K-12, or K-12 schools across the state.
I love that.
So thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or anything? Okay, with that being said, do we have a motion moving forward on item number I?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item I as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. So we'd like to get a photo, if we can.
Did you finish signing?
Yeah, we did.
I had to wait to see, you know.
It's invisible ink, though. It'll be gone in an hour.
Happy faces, three, two, and one more, three, two, one. Thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, item N.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item N is a simple public easement change, and what's important about this, and I'd like Supervisor Miller to expound on it maybe a little bit. We've talked about the many things that are happening or doing for Randolph, the unincorporated area south of Coolidge, and the county's commitment to, to making up lost time, perhaps some neglect of that area. and the county's commitment to, to making up lost time, perhaps some neglect of that area. And so, this was my district. I'm, I'm happy to have started it, but I'm really proud of Supervisor Miller and pleased with the continued work that he has done for the folks there in Randolph. So, Mr. Miller, could you explain the, what this easement is for?
Yeah, we're, through the development of the Randolph subdivision, we're coming up with some monument signs. Celeste, there you are. What are you doing hiding back there? Come up here for a second. Well, anyway, and, you know, as the surveyors got out there and they draw all their lines and put the pins in, we need a little bit more room to put these monuments in. Am I correct on that?
Close.
Close? I know that, I mean, as we're, we're trying to, to coordinate everything and provide the aesthetics that they're looking for, for the subdivision, so.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Celeste Garz. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works. So, this is a piece of property that the county owns, and we are initiating a sale with the Randolph community where they'll potentially put a community center on the piece of property. During that, yeah, during that purchase, they did an Ulta survey and found that there was an extra 50-foot of roadway easement that was there, placed in the twenties, and we didn't know about it. So, we're in the process of abandoning that so they can use the land for the community center. The plot is very old, so it was from the twenties, and it surfaced several things along the way, but yes.
More to follow, most likely. But anyway.
But all great things.
It's all good, good work out there, and thanks to the Pinal County Public Works Department and everybody on staff for walking this thing through. It's, and I hope at some point here, within maybe the next six months, we're able to go out there and do a video and, and really show off all the things that have been done out there, so.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item N as presented.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, item number nine. So, at this time, I'm gonna recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, and will now convene into our district meeting. It's the Library District Board of Directors' meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look over the agenda? Okay, any items that need to be pulled? They're all consent items. Is there any items from the board, county manager, anybody from the public? Okay, we have a motion moving forward then.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Library District Consent Items A and B as presented.
We have a motion, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, next item is, and we'll now move into the notice. We'll, we'll close the Pinal County Library District Board Meeting, and we'll open now the Public Health Services District Board of Directors' meeting. It, it appears that everything is a consent item, so anything that's been by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a member of our board, and I'm asking you right now, anybody from the board? Any, our county manager, anybody from the public? Being that there's none, let's, is there a motion moving forward on this one?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Pinal County Public Health Services District Consent Items as presented.
We have a second.
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have that one. Okay, now, we're gonna close the Pinal County Health Service District, and now we'll reconvene the Pinal County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Item number 11, this is also a public hearing and a discussion approval/disapproval of case number CSR-009-23. And we have, oh, Patrick, you're here. You were there last night, too. So, anyway, I was, I was trying to read my notes, but would you like to proceed?
Of course, sir. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Patrick Roberts, Senior Planner, here to discuss case CSR-00923. This is a sign review committee item presenting a package to allow two monument signs and eight wall signs with a total, with sign area maximum of 76.66 square feet per wall sign within a commercial complex. The applicant is pursuing this sign package to provide commercial signs with larger signs than the sign code currently permits. This property is, is on the northeast corner of Gary Road and West Empire Road in Santa Valley. It's the L-shaped parcel right behind the banner Urgent Care. Landowner is Clark Larson, and the applicant is Amanda Larizin from Precise Kind, Precise Sign Company, excuse me. This is a location map showing the approximate area where this sign package is being proposed. A vicinity map showing the location of this, this property right on the border with Queen Creek, Maricopa County. And an aerial map showing the layout with surrounding residential properties. The property is surrounded on the south and north side by CR3 properties. CB1 dedication for the banner Urgent Care, and CB2 across to the southeast, or southwest, excuse me. This is a sign plan showing the location of all proposed signage on the property. The eight wall signs are indicated with the red T designations for each individual business. And then, the two monument signs proposed are indicated with the pink M designations. This is a proposal for one of the businesses for their wall signage, for Anytime Dental. All of these signs would be limited to a total square footage of 76.66 square feet, as calculated by this, this graphic. Each element has a vertical block that will be established to determine where, how this is calculated, length and width, for contributing to that total 76.66 square feet. The applicants provided some additional graphics of additional proposals of what could potentially go in there. None of these businesses have, have submitted packages to locate at this property, but this is an idea of how signage would be calculated for different, different shapes and sizes of signs. This is an elevation image showing the, how the monument sign will be locate, will be designed. Two of the tenant signs will be located on one of the monuments, and the other monument will have four total tenant spaces. And these signs will be double-sided as well. It's worth noting, those, those monument signs do meet the current requirements of the Pinal County sign codes, so their inclusion in this package is largely to ensure this is comprehensive for the entire site for this, this commercial complex that's being proposed. This is an elevation on the west side, showing how signage can be dedicated for the three businesses with west, west fronting. South elevations. This is an image looking north onto the site. South. An additional image south from the east side, or sorry, from the west side of the property. Image looking east. Looking east across the property. West. So, some items for consideration from the board. The current amount of signs permitted per business in this zoning category is 48 square feet of area per business. That is the classification for, for commercial complexes. The applicant is proposing to provide 76.66 square feet of signage area per business. The potential total signage area could conceivably be 613.28 square feet of total signage. The request is for a 60% increase in allowed signage area for wall signs. That sign area increases over the 25% threshold, requiring that comprehensive sign packages be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors, as opposed to administratively approved. Staff has received no comments of support or opposition for this case. And staff is recommending approval of CSR-00923 with no stipulations. Does the board have any questions of staff?
Anybody have any questions at this time? Okay. Thank you, at this time. But this is a public hearing, so we'll get, go ahead and open up a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak in regards to this matter? Nobody's rushing, so seeing that there's none, we'll close our public hearing. And I just, on a side note, I want to add that, first of all, I have a brother-in-law named Clark Larson, but this is not him. And so, I don't have any conflicts on this one. I, my, it caught my eye when I said, wait a minute, but no, Clark doesn't have, I know, I know the dentist here, and that's him. He owns the property, and he's been in the Santa, he's actually been in Santa Valley for a long time. He has another location up off of Bella Vista and Hunt Highway, and he's been back up in there for a number of years. And so, he's just expanding, and there's already a soda shop that's there already. And so, I, I'm a big proponent of us making sure that they get the right kind of signings. Supervisor Miller?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick question. Did, did this go before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Sign review items don't go before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Signs do not go before.
They go before the Sign Review Committee. It did go before them due to a scheduling incident in trying to accommodate this applicant, making sure that they can get their signs up before opening. We scheduled that sign item for February 27th. They voted two to one in favor of approval of this sign package.
Two to one in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 as presented with no stipulations.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12, this is again another public hearing, and this is in regards to a discussion approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2024-SUP-029-23. Is Glenn here? Glenn, there you are.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board Members. SUP-029-23 is a request for a special use permit to continue to maintain a wireless communications facility on about five acres, locations northwest of East Apache Trail and East Mammoth Mine Road. Our owner is Gulfville Ghost Town and Mine Tours, and Scott Hopper is the applicant. So, here's your general location in the very northern and westernmost part of the county. And this parcel is surrounded by another larger parcel, and... My clicker doesn't seem to be responding. Okay. Okay. And here's an aerial of the property itself. And this is the, the site plan. And, okay, this is the elevation that shows as it exists currently on the left. It's a faux windmill, and they're proposing to conceal it with, to make it look more like a water tank. Looking north from the edge of the property, and then southeast to the superstitions. And then here, we have the site posted, a view to the west. This is a picture we found on Google Maps from 2011, so we can see that it's been in existence since at least then. So, items to consider, continued coverage. It's existed since at least 2011. No letters of opposition, and staff's recommendation is for approval with 15 stipulations as contained in your report.
Okay, any questions from the board members?
I just had a question. Scott Hopper is not the owner of the Ghost Town. Is he the owner of the tower?
No, he's the applicant there with the wireless.
Okay, that makes sense then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to come forward and, and address the board in regards to this matter? Being that there are none, we'll close the public hearing. So, a motion moving forward, brother.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 12 with 15 stipulations as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Unanimous. Okay, we're moving on to item number 13. This is in regards to discussion approval/disapproval of the funding for the recommended 3% Pinal County Health Benefits Increase for fiscal year of 2024 through 2025.
Good morning, Chairman. Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. I am before you now for Agenda Item 13, for funding for our Health Benefits Trust for fiscal year 2024, 2025. We're, I'm here to seek approval for funding. The funding strategy that we would like to use is consistent with the strategy that we've used in past years, so no changes there. The cost associated to the increase is approximately $650,000 to the county in total. General fund, that's about $485,000, and then our non-general fund or special revenue accounts, it's about $165,000. This minimal cost increase, and I say minimal because in prior years, the increase has much, been much more significant, is directly related to or attributed to our trust board's dedication and how they have monitored and managed the, the financial stability of our trust. Just for your information, and I believe an item has been before you in the past, one great decision that they have made over the past year is taking our short-term disability to a self-funded plan, which has saved our trust about $450,000 over the last year. So, that money stays with our trust and helps reduce the costs that we're needing to make for our contributions. The, the recommendation that's before you is also a, a result of our trust board's discussion that they had in regards to a financial reserve. A financial reserve is typically, and you know this, established to provide stability in, in our financial stability for our trust. You know, it will help us to control future contribution rates. It will help minimize any risks of passing high contribution increases onto our employees. Our trust board had a very, I would call, robust discussion about what, what that reserve might look like. Their current recommendation is to have about a four-month reserve, so four months of ongoing expenditures. Ongoing expenditures monthly is about 2.2 million every month, so, which means we would need a reserve, you know, maybe a little over $9 million to have four months. Currently, or at June 30th, our reserve was about 6.8 million, so shy of that four-month reserve. So, around a three, little over a three-month reserve. So, essentially, the increase to these contributions will be to help get us to that targeted four-month reserve. And just so you know that, you know, when we're doing that, that money does stay with us unless our medical claims and... with us unless our medical claims and, you know, goes up over the future year. So, you have any other questions or any information you'd like for me to provide?
Anybody? I think one thing that I'd like to maybe share with the other board members here in the public, what are our actual hard dollar cost? And then how much actually goes out of that 2 million and so, that, on a monthly basis, how much goes towards our hard dollar cost and how much goes into our reserves, which is actually owned by the county?
So, so currently, the way that they're funded this year, very little is going into our reserve at this point in time. Where, where basically contributions are matching, are outgoing. So, but in the future, we, really that 3%, that what I said, 650,000 increase will go into our reserve in the future year.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any, anybody else? Okay, let's, going forward, motion?
Mr. Chair, I move, excuse me, that we approve item 13 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Unanimous.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. And thank you to our board. You know, this is something that is important to our employees. We have a really rich benefit structure that we've been able to do over the years, and I commend our board for doing that. It shows a lot of appreciation to our employees if they have good, excellent benefits that they can rely, rely on. Item number 14, discussion of board members' requests for future added items and reports to be presented at upcoming meetings. So is there anybody that would like to see future items? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have a discussion about changing the audit committee rules to allow for appointments of individuals who do not work for a government within Pinal County but who meet the other requirements. Good accounting practices keeps people independent when they do audits and examinations. And because of the limited amount of people who are qualified, it may sometimes be difficult, number one. Number two, I think it's a best practice to have people in the accounting fields who may be experts in government and meet the other qualifications. So I'd like to have a discussion about that and the arguments for and against. And then another discussion item for the board, hiring a hearing officer for tax appeals per ARS 42-16, I think it's 103, rather than contracting with the State Board of Equalization. So if we, you know, if we examine what kind of services were provided this past year, whether they were good, bad, I think, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, perhaps it was Miller. Was it Miller? I think Mr. Miller, you know, are, are the decisions correct on both, are they wrong on both sides evenly, or is it, you know? So I think we need to look at that in total and then discuss perhaps hiring our own hearing officer.
So, and if I could add a friendly, whatever to that, when you do that, is that you, that staff would put the numbers as well. What are hard dollar costs of what we've been spending right now currently with the Board of Equalization compared to what the cost would be if we were to hire outside, somebody directly to do that for us? Okay. Any more? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No, thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just on that topic, on that topic, because I think what is important is you need to look at the service that is provided when we use this outside source. They handle all the mailing, they handle all the notifications they handle. We would probably end up having to hire staff if we were going to do this in-house. So look at it like, I mean, that's how you need to really evaluate it going forward, if I may.
Yeah, a thorough evaluation, whether it's merited or not.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any others from anybody else? All right, you got your marching orders, Leo? All right, good. Okay, we will now, if I can get a motion, item number 15 to go into executive session.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? So we've got, how many items? Two. And then we'll come back in to adjourn. Thank you. Any oppose? Ayes have it. And our meeting is adjourned. I love it.